Good morning. Call the Order this, uh, Grant County Board of Commissioners, Special Meeting, August twentieth, twenty eighteen. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. As you see this flag on stage in New Mexico, it is the symbol of perfect friendship among American.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like to amend the agenda by removing appointing an alternate to the valuation protest board, because my understanding that the assessor is not ready to do that. Doesn't need to do it. Okay. Is it second?
Second.
Call and say it.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the, uh, August twentieth, uh, agenda.
Second.
On your favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, Resolution, uh, B, approved this, approved Resolution R eighteen twenty-nine, a resolution requesting the United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service to designate Bear Creek Area of Interest Forest Road five oh six as a designated motor trail.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the Resolution R dash eighteen dash twenty-nine.
Second.
And I did want to, I'm sorry, just for discussion, I just wanted to make sure that we do change the trail to road.
I need to amend it then.
Uh, I'd like to go ahead and amend our Resolution R eighteen twenty-nine to include, uh, to, to change trail to road on the first paragraph and the last, and the, the after the therefore, very end of that sentence.
And we have a motion and a second.
On the amendment.
Uh, on the amendment, is there any discussion?
Uh, no discussion.
I guess, I could kind of explain why. Um, I know that the, the, uh, Forest Service is actually wanting some comments on the Burro Mountains where they did designate a bunch of trails, and there's been a lot of complaints from the public wanting to change those to four-by-four roads because they can't use some of the, uh, HOVs or UTVs that they have because they don't meet the, the requirement on the fifty inches, or the fifty inch wide requirement. So, I, that's why I'm trying to avoid that here, and I'd really like to see this as a road versus a trail.
So, you're saying if it's designated as a trail, the fifty inch wide maximum applies, if it's a road, it does not?
Okay. On your favor. On the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, Agenda item C, approve.
No, 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 that's just the amendment.
That's just the amendment.
Oh, okay. And on the...
Now, there's a main motion.
On the, on the main motion on the floor, any discussion?
So, I do have some comments.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. So, I, uh, believe it's imperative that we look at decisions like this in the context of the bigger picture. Ultimately, what we want is a healthy forest that we can enjoy in our chosen way and that can support broad economic success. In order to do that, we must have healthy riparian areas for wildlife habitat, and the hotter and drier it gets, the more critical those habitats become. In a three-point-three-million-acre national forest that already has more than three thousand miles of motorized off-road vehicle access, there's simply no way to justify allowing motorized off-road vehicle access to sixteen-hundred acres of prime freshwater riparian habitat that was purchased at a cost of six million dollars specifically to preserve it. There is a plethora of documented evidence of the incredible ecological damage that is caused by unauthorized off-trail ATV and ORV use. Personally, I see the misuse and abuse all over this area, including San Vicente Creek, Boston Hill, other open space areas in the forest, and even in both wilderness areas. There is no doubt there are bad actors in every recreational activity, but one bad actor or worse, a group of bad actors on ORVs can create a significant amount of ecological damage in a very short time. It is simply not worth the risk of having that happen in the Bear Creek area. I believe it should be closed to all motor vehicle traffic except administrative use to Hermits Cabin. I have been advocating for trails and open space master plan since before I was elected, and this is a prime example of why I think we need one. Having a framework of understanding that is based on balancing the competing values and needs of all outdoor recreationists would be invaluable when making decisions like this that have a broad and far-reaching impact on our collective future. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Probably ought to update Commissioner Brown where we are. So, if, I, I, so what we've done is we amended the agenda, first of all, uh, on new business, we did not need to appoint, uh, the valuation protest board. Uh, there has been, so we moved into R eighteen twenty-nine, uh, there's been an amendment to R eighteen twenty-nine that's been approved, changing motorized trail to road in both places, and now we are voting on the main motion to approve R eighteen twenty-nine, and we're in discussion.
I need to express my disappointment that the public comment was not on the agenda. Uh, the purpose of postponing our meeting in the first place was to allow more time for public input. Uh, obviously, if I'd been here on time, I, I was in a better position to request that amendment, but I had let the chairman know that I wanted that on the agenda, and he asked.
We have manager Webb, and she shows a sorrow in making that.
I believe we haven't asked, actually, uh, overridden that and allowed public comment at special meeting.
Okay, they asked me, are we going to our meetings at Revolution, which states that except that circumstances require, there will be no public input at work sessions, special meetings are emergency meetings at the Forest and County Commissioners.
This is clearly, in my, in my opinion, clearly a case where circumstances required it. The whole point of the special meeting was to allow public comment, that we didn't feel that two days was enough time. I was impressed that the commission agreed that we needed to allow more time for that because it was a lasting item that came up, that we had a chance to offer these comments. So, there's my disappointment.
I'm not opposed to public comment.
I'm not either.
As long as it doesn't go on.
I just going to be willing to, uh, to add it.
Well, I think you could do it right now.
Yeah, because we are in discussion.
But, I don't know if anybody's here to say something, but given that that's why we extended, I'd like to give them the chance, if they got up there early enough to get here by eight, I, I appreciate hearing them.
I have no problem with it. I'll, I'll, I do want to state that, uh, I did have some friends that called, and I said, "Well, there's no public input." That wanted to be here, and I told them, "There isn't any."
There is, there was a lot of you.
There was a lot. I actually had that same experience, and I said, "There's one on the agenda, I will be requesting an amendment."
Especially Mr. Toons and the gentleman that were here last week. He said, "Well, do we have to come back Monday?" And, uh, to a while, there's no public input.
And Mr. Fell. Yeah, although I think we did have a chance to hear them.
Yeah, we did.
And I actually took some of their comments to heart. So, may I make a motion at this point to sort of...
There's a motion on the floor is the problem. Yeah, I think what we just do is we allow, the chair allows, uh, limited discussion or in discussion.
Okay.
Would that be acceptable?
Absolutely, it was for me, the furniture.
Very many people here.
I agree.
Is there anyone who came to make public comment on the item at hand, which is the Bear Creek Route? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, one, two? Okay. Uh, we'll just start with you, sir. Please, uh, please state your name for the record.
Yes, uh, I think it'd be good for discussion if the commissioners use their microphones.
I think, uh, if you have a button there to push, and it will turn later. Just keep them in the back there.
Uh, if, if the commissioners could use their microphones, those of us who sit in the back and are somewhat hard of hearing could, uh, participate or listen more. Uh, I'm, uh, Bob Garrett. I'm the president of the Pinos Altos Mutual Domestic Water Consumers Association, and...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm starting to, could you leave your comments to, uh, about three minutes?
Sure. Um, please let me know when, uh, my time has been exceeded. Um, as I said, I was president of the Water Association in Pinos Altos, uh, and, um, I have my ear to the community because of that, and there is no, uh, first of all, I see that whereas, uh, the, uh, highway is being requested to be an off-road vehicle, we have had no comment, uh, or from the commissioners to our community. We are an incorporated, an unincorporated community, and, uh, we would like to be represented in decisions that are made, but there is no information passed out to the people in the community. And one of the reasons that we're somewhat upset about this is, um, the, uh, move to open New Mexico fifteen as a highway for, uh, ROVs is that it starts at six-point-two, which is the crest of the hill, and it means that ROVs go all the way through the town of Pinos Altos, and there are property owners and landowners who are concerned about that. Perhaps it should start at the forest boundary rather than, uh, the top of the hill. Uh, the other issues are, uh, public safety. We are very lightly patrolled, I think that's a understatement, lightly patrolled by the Grant County Sheriff's Office, and, uh, we're concerned about the safety of, uh, the increased , uh, ROV, uh, movement on the road. We're also possibly concerned about noise and air pollution, but that's a secondary matter, it's more a question of public safety on the road. We would like to, uh, be supportive of...
Time's up? No, one minute.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, we would like to be supportive of increasing, uh, tourism and, uh, access for hunting and other purposes, but we're not sure that a paved road is improving access for hunting, least for, uh, people on ROVs. So, I think we need more discussion on this and more information, uh, particularly from our commissioner, who, uh, represents the, uh, rest of his district well, but doesn't seem to, uh, yeah, gather input from Pinos Altos. Thank you.
Uh, just for the record, there's, there's nothing on Highway fifteen and ROV traffic on the agenda today, is that correct?
It's in the warehouse here. It's in the warehouse, is what you're saying, that this is...
Oh, okay, gotcha, all right. Uh, next, public comment?
Good morning, members of the commissioner. I'm Mary Lindell. I'm here representing the Allo Silver City Broadband of the Great Old Broads for Wilderness, as well as my own personal concerns. Um, on behalf of a broadband, we have written you a letter and an email that you should have received yesterday evening due to short notice, um, asking that you vote against opening this area to motorized travel. Clearly, there's some people back there who have, um, little parcels of land, and they have an easement right or whatever to get back there, but to open it further to other people's use, we feel will be detrimental to, um, the wilderness, the forest area, and detrimental to the purposes behind the purchase of this piece of land. The Bear Creek area was purchased for conservation purposes under the Land and Water Conservation Fund for Riparian Habitat Conservation and Hiking, not motorized vehicle use. Um, the area is one of the very few riparian areas left in Grant County in relatively pristine condition, which makes it critical to maintaining wildlife and fish habitat and supporting sustainable recreational opportunities for those people who go in by horseback and hiking, et cetera. Um, motorized vehicle use in Bear Creek would degrade water quality and exacerbate soil erosion, which impacts watershed health and in turn impacts all the critters that depend on this, including fishers, fishing, which in turn impacts the value of an area for hunting and other such purposes. And we can take a look out west in California, and I don't know where this smoke is coming from today, if it's their smoke or our smoke, but motorized vehicle use increases fire hazards in drought areas. My goodness, we're in a drought area, we're gonna be for a while, I fear, and we've been for a while, and to put additional vehicles in an area where, which is remote from the services, as was indicated, um, it just seems like the potential for a greater disaster, including for those people who live out there.
One minute.
Thank you. We've recently given this past week feedback to the National Forest Service on this issue, and we asked as follows. There is a piece of the road that starts from PA and goes down to a private piece of land where it first started. We're okay with that being opened to vehicular traffic down to this parking area. We think that can be used as a jumping-off point for a variety of purposes, but we think that the area beyond is ideal for a rustic outdoor classroom setting. The Great Old Broads have volunteered to act as site stewards for that, and a few, um, a rough camp area, outdoor classroom kind of thing could be supervised through there, but keep the vehicular traffic from going beyond that point. Keep it open, keep the, uh, area relatively pristine, and make it a nice area that we and our kids and their kids can use for generations to come. Vehicles break down trails. Um, other things break down trails, but let's not do it to this nice piece of, uh, area that was purchased for a specific purpose, specific type of funds, to make it nice for all of us in the future. Thank you.
Further public comment, or raise a hand, please? Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, you, thank you. Okay, never mind.
I don't know who you were pointing at, I apologize.
No, no problem.
Um, my name is Rhonda Jackson. I'm reading this letter for, uh, from the Southwest Sufi Community Board member who cannot be here, Lucia Rogers. Earlier this year, fifteen hundred acres surrounding Bear Creek Riparian Zone was placed under the Conservation Easement. This is downstream of two formerly privately-owned parcels, which contain a stretch of Bear Creek being proposed for conversion into a road or an ATV, UTV trail. This Conservation Easement protects in perpetuity the only two-point-five miles of Bear Creek that flows on the surface year-round. The Bureau of Land Management has also purchased parcels along and surrounding Bear Creek, and in a number of other, uh, and a number of other landowners have been taking ranch lands surrounding, uh, bordering Bear Creek out of intensive grazing. Finally, these two formerly private, uh, parcels were purchased with the intention to preserve, conserve, or even allow to return to a healthier state the stretch of Bear Creek within them. The accelerating trend in recent years has been to protect the Gila watershed and tributaries of the Gila, such as Bear Creek, not to turn this fragile, important waterway into a dirt road. We took the extraordinary measure of obtaining a Conservation Easement, not just to preserve the dozen rare and endangered species that reside in the fifteen hundred acres, which are a part of the former Avery Ranch, and not just to help co-create a, preserve Bear Creek for the enjoyment of people, not just this or that group of hobbyists, but for this generation, the next generation, and generations far into the future. What happens upstream matters downstream. Vehicle traffic in and through a sensitive creek bend or creating a fragile riparian ecosystem into a road will have detrimental effects downstream on our land, within the downstream section of Bear Creek, which is protected by a Conservation Easement and surrounded by parcels, also not being developed or graded or turned into dirt roads. That easement involves agencies of the federal and state government, as well as the New Mexico Land Conservancy, the Bureau of Land Management, New Mexico Fish and Wildlife, our neighbor and ranch owners, and the nonprofit organization that owns the land now known as the Southwest Sufi Community. The process was a beautiful model of private and public interest cooperating to achieve something worthy and good. Turning any part of an increasingly important fragile or sensitive riparian zone into a dirt road is a bad idea. Turning this part of Bear Creek into a dirt road is a classically bad idea. Thank you. Dr. Lucia Rogers, Board Member, Southwest Sufi Community.
Thank you. Back in the corner. Yes.
Good morning, commissioners, thank you for taking our comments. My name is Kara Fugali, and I am a Silver City resident. I urge you not to support the use of motorized vehicles in the Bear Creek area, firstly, because the land was acquired through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. The application for purchase of this property did not mention motorized travel, and using that asset is contrary to the purpose for which this land was acquired. This acquisition occurred at the end of twenty sixteen, and at that time Senator Udall stated, and I quote, "Upper Bear Creek in the Gila National Forest is a stunningly beautiful area that is both a great place to hike and camp and an important riparian habitat for plants and wildlife, and I am pleased that the Land and Water Conservation Funds were available to enhance recreation opportunities for New Mexicans and protect the quality of the water for everyone who depends on it. Motorized vehicle use will exacerbate soil erosion, further destabilizing watershed conditions in Bear Creek. There are several sensitive areas downstream that could be affected by water quality problems created by soil disturbance, including Dorsey Springs and Health Half Acre. Native fish, including the endangered Loach Minnow, are likely to be harmed by motorized travel in this riparian area. All of our riparian areas are important climatic refugial areas, those areas where species have the best chances of surviving during climate change as we see temperatures spike and the risk of fire increase. The National Climate Assessment predicts that Southwest pine forest will have a five-hundred-and-seventy percent increase of fire by the end of the century. Motorized vehicles will greatly increase this risk, and if allowed, it will only be a matter of time when a raging fire burns out of control. We need to protect these important areas and reduce the stressors placed on the ecosystem. Just this past weekend, tagged cows were seen along Bear Creek. Cows already place a stressor to the riparian system, and motorized vehicles will be yet another. Not only do the vehicles themselves cause soil erosion damage..."
One minute.
"But, thank you, but it is all too common for the humans who drive the vehicles and their passengers, uh, to then leave their trash, debris, and garbage in our beautiful forest. Since we have a paucity of law enforcement personnel in our national forest, it will be impossible to enforce off-trail ORV and four-wheel drive vehicle use in this area. So, please, let's keep Bear Creek free from motorized vehicles. Thank you."
If I raise a hand, public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Doine Realy, that's D-O-Y-N-E-W-R-E-A-L-L-I. I'm a program associate with Gila Resources Information Program. GRIP is one of the three organizations in the Gila Conservation Coalition that works to protect the Gila River and its watershed. The Gila Conservation Coalition believes that the Bear Creek area should be closed to motorized vehicle use for all of the reasons you've heard before, which I will not repeat. But in addition, authorization of a new road in the Bear Creek riparian area is not a best management practice. The Forest Service and other agencies are making concerted efforts to relocate roads in riparian areas. It makes no sense to authorize a new road in a sensitive riparian area, creating the likelihood of expensive restoration in the future. You've heard that it will impact fish and native species. It will, including the highly endangered Loach Minnow. According to the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish, the Bear Creek Corridor supports a native population of the endangered Loach Minnow, several other native fish, including the Sonora sucker and Desert sucker, that are species of federal concern, as well as twenty-nine species that are categorized as of greatest conservation need. Finally, we believe that the Bear Creek area should be maintained for non-motorized uses, including as an alternate route for the Continental Divide Trail. Given the limited riparian recreational opportunities near Silver City and the ecological importance of this riparian area, Bear Creek should be reserved for non-motorized use. There are only a couple of other places like this available, like Cherry Creek and Little Cherry Creek. We also understand that many hikers on the Continental Divide Trail use Bear Creek due to the water sources there. For these reasons, along with all of the others you've heard, we respectfully request that you disapprove Resolution R eighteen twenty-nine. We do, however, support Resolution R eighteen thirty, that supports decommissioning of closed roads and the burrows. Thank you for accepting our comments.
If I raise a hand? Uh, yes, sir, you in the back? Yes, sir, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Robert Frishoff, and I live in Silver City. Thank you, commissioners, for this opportunity to speak. Um, I think everything's been said already, and I would like to, um, give my support to the previous comments that oppose the establishment of a new motorized, uh, trail in Bear Creek, and I think the two key points are, number one, the land was acquired for hiking trails only, so we could actually be changing the purpose for which the land was acquired, but furthermore, I think it's well-established that these particular areas, that is, alongside creeks and rivers, riparian areas are very fragile, and it's best to avoid adding additional motorized traffic to the area. In fact, we'd want to perhaps relocate roads that run alongside places such as Bear Creek. So, simply put, I would say, please, uh, do not approve the resolution, and let's keep Bear Creek as it is. Thank you very much.
You go back.
Good morning, commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to be here. Uh, my name's Dan Roper, I work with the Continental Divide Trail Coalition, based here in Silver City, New Mexico. I shared with you all via email, um, our comments to the Forest Service regarding, uh, transportation designation in the Bear Creek area this morning. Um, and just, real quick, I would just add that, you know, our, our concerns are really about the impact of the Continental Divide Trail, um, which passes through this area, but as many of you may not know, the, uh, the route that most of the through-hikers take through this region is Forest Road five oh six, it's known as the Gila Alternate Route. Um, they take it from the Little Walnut area up to, uh, on, on their way to, to the middle fork of the Gila River, the Gila Cliff dwellings, that vicinity. So, our concerns are really about the increased, uh, motorized use and how that would impact all of those hikers coming through in the spring and other times of year, um, using Forest Road five oh six. Thank you.
Further public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning, my name's Martin Wright, and there seems to be some confusion. Um, there's an existing road already in Bear Creek. We're not creating a new road, it's already there, and has been there for probably in excess of a hundred years. My guess is it predates the Forest Service. I think we should keep it open. You know, it, by locking it up, you just lock up another section of forest that people with any handicap or any disability can never, ever use or see. And because my wife is handicapped, we use ATVs to get around for her to see things that otherwise she would never, ever get to see, and just to close it because doesn't make any sense to me. And going back to travel management, when we started this process, with my understanding that roads that carried a three-digit designation were forest system roads and would not be subject to closure under travel management. Five oh six, that's a three-digit road, it's insisting it's been there forever, leave it open. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Oh, yes, sir, sorry, it's you.
Good morning, thanks for, uh, allowing the public comment this morning. My name is Ron Troy. I am a Grant County resident and work for New Mexico Land Conservancy, and, uh, I was involved in the Southwest Sufi Conservation Easement, and the funding for that was through mitigation funding from Freeport MacMoRan and, uh, damage that was done, uh, to some of the freshwater habitat in the area, and it was a significant amount that the... And as part of that settlement, they put together a competitive process in which we were submitting proposals to offset some of that freshwater and riparian damage. And the Southwest Sufi property that was mentioned earlier, that's several hundred thousand dollars that the public has put in to that particular project, not including the time that our organization put into it. The Southwest Sufi also made an extremely generous donation to the public for the protection of that corridor as well. That project ranked extremely high with U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the New Mexico Department Office of Natural Resources Trustee, and was granted that funding based on protection of that watershed because of the collective efforts in that entire watershed that were being done for that same purpose. These three purchases of the area that we're talking about currently, the Double E Ranch. So in excess of millions of dollars have been put into this particular watershed for the protection of freshwater resources in the habitat that goes with it. And I think to put roads into this area and jeopardize the, it doesn't take but one road, one parking lot, to unravel a system. And I think it's really important, though the road was there, my understanding was that private property curtailed a lot of the travel down that road, and I understand the willingness to do that, but please consider the investment we have in protecting this watershed and how very little freshwater habitat is out here in the desert southwest, and how much is already compromised, and the importance of protecting the last of it. Yeah, and I guess one last comment is common blackhawks. There's probably about 300 nesting pair of common blackhawks in the entire United States. And I would probably put 100 bucks on the fact that there's at least three of those nests in the Bear Creek watershed, just to give you an idea of the importance of this particular freshwater habitat for fish and wildlife. That's a pretty good indicator. But anyhow, thank you for your time.
Further public comment? Okay, we have, we have the main motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
I'll go ahead and go first.
Yes.
I'd like to tell you that I have had the privilege to enjoy our pristine forest by hunting, fishing, hiking, and ATVing, camping, and just driving around in the forest. I remember driving around with my parents and their friends, going to our favorite campsites, fishing, hunting, our favorite hunting spots and beautiful sites, which gave me some of the best memories I've ever had in my lifetime. Now I do the same with my family. I want my family to have some of the same great memories that I enjoyed. I want everyone to enjoy that and make their own memories here. Just because we are wanting to keep our forest open to all so that we all can enjoy it does not make us the bad people. There are always going to be some that will go into the forest and litter, knock down trees, carve out trees. There are always going to be bad people that mess it up for all of us. The way we can make change is by cleaning up after others and ourselves, as we were taught by our parents and family and our family heritage. I would not have stayed here to raise my family, as I am the fifth generation in my family here in Grant County. If we did not have the forest to recreate, I don't think I'd be here. I truly believe that we need to preserve this land and keep its beauty for our children, and I know that we all agree on that part. And we need to keep it for our children and grandchildren, and even their grandchildren, but not by closing roads and limiting what people can do. I would like to give you some of the reasons I would like to keep this forest road open. And the main reason is disabled residents and disabled vets and our retirement community. Our retirement community is very important for this area, and a lot of retirees moved here a long time ago to come in and utilize our forest. And unfortunately, they are not privileged, like you and I, to be able to go out there and hike. Why in the world would we want to keep them out and opt for enjoying our forest? Culture values. Like I said, I'm the fifth generation here, and I really enjoyed our forest. Bicyclists, bicyclists are very important for this area. We're talking about monies coming into our area. They bring in a lot of money, especially when we have the forest creating different types of trails to use and different types of family outings for the bicyclists. ATV users, ATV users are very important for our area because they also bring in a lot of money into our area. Of course, hikers, they come in. Rock climbers, gold painters, especially in this area. Woodcutters. Woodcutters make a living out of wood cutting. Not everyone has been privileged to have a great job. Not everyone has been privileged to make good money to raise a family, so many people in this area become woodcutters so they can do so. Most people that have moved into this county moved here due to Grant County's being a beautiful place to live and welcome, and I welcome them to our county. Please don't try to make or come here and change things as they were perfect when you decided to move here. Don't try to make things unique, try and make this unique tranquil place like the place you moved here from. Many newcomers will never enjoy this place like I have due to changes that have already been made and recently made, as we have done away with many, many roads and many, many views. My question to the opposition is, why, if you like or love this place enough to move here, why would you want to lock people out of the forest and minimize use? Our forest, for the longest time, has been known as a land of many uses. The opposition wants it to be the land of only their use. If you want wilderness, there's already close to 800,000 acres out there. That is quite, it is pristine. I've hiked those trails. I enjoy those trails. Tourism. There's a lot of tourism brought in by ATVs and other uses besides hiking. Vehicles already go through this area. I'm 37 years old, and that road's been there for 47 of my years. And I've got to, I've been able to go ahead and utilize that road and enjoy the Ben Lilly Pond. We've caught bass, and we've actually swam there. Of course, we had to ask for permission, but we're able to use that road. I'm always against public lands being purchased or utilized, and then we remove the roads so that people can go ahead and use them. I'm totally against that. I am for public lands because, hey, we don't want to become Texas where everything is private and we can't utilize anything. But let's keep this place the land of many uses. I don't think anybody here disagrees that this is probably the most beautiful forest we could ever live around and enjoy, but let's let everyone enjoy this, not just a select few and not just for your reasons. We all have reasons on utilizing that forest, not just hikers and not just conservation groups and not just the people that come here because they're paid to be here. And they're paid to come in here and be against us every time there is an issue. It's the same people over and over. They represent, they represent, uh, just different environmental groups. And they're paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to come in here and talk to us and give us their reasons of why we need to close roads and do away with people in the forest. Well, God bless. Let's take care of those 5% that mess it up for all of us and turn them in when we can. And when we can go out there and pick things up, because I know a lot of gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, that go out there and they pick up after others as well as I do. Let's respect each other's opinions, but let's make sure that everyone can utilize our forest, not just the select few and for their reason. Thank you.
Further comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank the commissioner again for that 20-minute segment of public input. I think it's important for us to do that. And I also want to thank my commissioner for the conversation. I'm glad we're having this conversation. I think it's important we understand where each other's coming from. I actually feel maybe overly optimistically that we're coming to more of a mutual understanding. I agree with the commissioner almost, a lot of this, you know, it is about multiple uses. It's about accommodating lots of different values. It is, as I mentioned on Thursday, about balance, right? Balancing different needs, different desires, different values. I guess I want to take a brief digression and let my fellow commissioner know that when I was director of GRIP, I earned $0 for a year. I earned $10,000 for seven years. My maximum salary was $24,000. There is nobody earning hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Accumulated.
On the other side. Well, I'd love to see the data. I seriously doubt it. I really do. And I also feel that focusing on that undermines the message that we respect that opinion and we're willing to, you know, to listen to it and combine it with other opinions to come to decisions. I don't believe that people, no matter how much they're earning, are saying things they don't believe are true. And they are Grant County residents, and they represent other Grant County residents, and they're giving us a message. So I'd like to put that piece aside and go back to this question of balancing values. And in this case, you know, I think there's conservation values, there's access values, and there's the kind of access values, whether it's quiet or motorized, whether it's accessible for people with disabilities or not. Those kinds of questions are what we're balancing. And Mr. Ramis, you've suggested that people have moved here and not to change things that were already perfect, and to some extent, that's true. It's not the part about being already perfect necessarily, but that folks like me who have moved here have different visions and push those visions, as we can do in democracies, and that means some changes. But some changes are the result of unsustainable practices that happened by people who lived here before I did. And that's part of what I, as a newcomer, am seeing, perhaps with fresh eyes that folks have lived here for a long time, don't see as well. I think the most obvious example is the plaster mowing that took place on that Berry River. That was highly unsustainable, and you can see those scars still 100 years later. Another example, I believe, is motorized overuse of trails. It's hard to see day to day, but over time, that produces effects, erosion, conversion of rascals to dirt, degradation of habitat. So changes are not just the result of new people coming in. Sometimes they're the result of existing residents using unsustainable practices. All that being said, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this particular road effort, and I'm not in the position of the Forest Service as the final decision-maker, so I have quite a bit of luxury there. But I do believe that there should be access to a good portion of Forest Service 506, and that it is wrong to close the entire thing off to motorized use. I actually am glad we changed motorized trail to road because I don't want this to be just for ATV users. I want it to be for families that might be going out in a four-wheel-drive vehicle. But some of this area is not appropriate for that. And on the west portion, which is a portion that I didn't think we should even be talking about because it's already part of the travel management plan, that initial section there, I don't believe that's appropriate for anything other than a light ATV. It's steep, and would cost the Forest Service way too much to maintain properly for even four-wheel-drive vehicles. On the other hand, the west section, which is the one I think we should be talking about, I believe can be driven sustainably as far perhaps as Wilson Canyon, Moertank area. That road's in good condition. Most of it is well off of the creek. And I think that to allow families sort of seeing this all as the ability to get there, whether they're folks with disabilities or not, folks who just don't generally hike several miles and then have a picnic, that that's a value that I would like to encourage the Forest Service to allow. So my feeling, and I don't know how to look this into the main motion that we're talking about, is that we should encourage the Forest Service to allow motorized vehicles up to that area if the Forest Service is willing and able to invest the money required to do that sustainably, right? That means signage, that means decommissioning side roads, that means installing an appropriate parking area that will not increase erosion, and then providing some educational signs also about not going off trail, understanding the importance of preserving that habitat so that we can all have a lot of what we're looking for out of this area. One thing I really don't understand, and I've heard this a lot, including from some of my friends, is the need for this to be a motorized loop. People can get out and enjoy the forest without having to drive in a circle, right? There's no reason we can't drive, enjoy, and drive back. So I really don't understand the loop idea, and it is not worth it to me to allow that loop when it involves crossing the creek and driving basically in the creek bed for a long stretch, which is the portion that we see in red on our map that was closed under the existing travel management plan, fed essentially from Wilson Canyon or so over to Hermans Trail. That should remain closed, I believe. That crosses the creek too many times, which is another one of the values we're talking about. We would like to restore that creek to an even healthier riparian condition than it's in now, certainly not provide for its degradation. So I've still, I've figured out in the last couple of weeks. I really appreciate the chance to do that, and I don't know if there's room, if we're talking about the main motion, to amend anything to incorporate some of these ideas.
Mr. Chairman? I think, to clarify on what you said, I don't think we're talking about anything. It's already been done in the travel management plan. I think we're talking about what's left. Isn't that how you...
No, so my understanding of this area of interest is that there was an eastern portion and a western portion that were purchased at different times for budgetary reasons, and that the western portion was purchased in time to be included, and that that goes from roughly where the subdivision motorized road starts to Wilson Canyon or so. And I don't have good markers on the map that was provided to me, but it's about 60% of the horizontal distance, and that 40% on the east is the portion that we're talking about. That was my understanding.
And that's apart by Ben Lilly Pond.
Ben Lilly to Moertank or so. And we could ask for clarification from the Forest Service rep if that's appropriate, please. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Sure. Um, I introduce myself. My name is Beth Healy. I'm a detail ranger for Silver City, and I started this conundrum about a month ago, I suppose, when we kicked out our public involvement effort on the three projects. It was decommissioning in the burrows, ATV trails in the burrows, and Bear Creek. So just to be clear where we are in process, when we identified and broached the subject of Bear Creek, and I'll just stay on that one, it was to get feedback in a broader sense than just the final piece of private property that was acquired. And here was why. The travel plan decision predated that final acquisition. And so what was understood by the folks that were working on the travel plan at that time was, they came up with the best thing that could be done at that time because we did not own the rest of it. There are also resource values in there, so we also have to be consistent with our forest plan. So when we acquired this final piece a little over a year ago, the forest supervisor felt it's time to take some comment on it and see where people's thoughts are, what are people interested in, and we've certainly gotten robust feedback. So we appreciate this effort that the county has engaged in to bring that dialogue... people interested in, and we've certainly gotten robust feedback. So we appreciate this effort that the county has engaged in to bring that dialogue into this venue as well. As you understand, your cooperation as a cooperator with the Forest Service is very important. We share a lot of the same conundrums of meeting values and meeting the public's needs. So, and in our case, and meeting the plan and meeting the multiple-use mandate, so we appreciate wrestling with this one as well. So thanks. Did that answer your question?
I think so, just to clarify in one sentence. Even though the western portion of this area of interest was incorporated in the travel management plan, you were looking for feedback about what to do with that because that was sort of an interim decision.
Yes, it could be a long-term decision if we don't decide to pick this up because if we are going to make management changes that require more NEPA, we'll have to submit, we'll have to issue a proposed action, go through scoping. Depends on the management changes we adopt. If we keep our decision just to the land that we acquired, we could end up having a kind of a clunky system in there, I guess, if you want to use that word. So we were interested in the broader, you know, transportation system that goes from west to east, east to west, so.
Thank you, Commissioner, for clearing me up on that.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion?
I just have one more thing. You know, I'll just remember this, this weekend, I had the privilege to take my family out and go into the reserve area and I just showing Commissioner Edwards some of the beautiful pictures that we took out there. And one of my relatives, David from Albuquerque, he's a Vietnam vet and he's really hurt from his back and legs and got shot a few times and he speaks real loud like I do, just like I can't hear from the M60 I used to shoot for eight years. I lost my hearing and he speaks real loud and, you know, I just, and I know I speak real loud and I think it's due to I can't hear half the time. But I know for a fact that if he went to bid for those roads, and that's why I'm so passionate, if he went to bid for those roads and a vehicle for us to get him out there, there's no way he would have enjoyed those pristine areas and that's why I'm so passionate. I want everyone to enjoy, not just a few. That's all I've got.
Chairman.
Thanks.
Further discussion? Are we ready to consider the motion then? All in favor of the main motion?
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved. Next agenda item, approve or disapprove Resolution R-1830, a resolution requesting the United States Department of Air and Coastal Forest Service to decommission certain road, closed roads in the Borough Mountains.
Oh, yeah, thank you for reminding me. This resolution has a clause in there about unless public input is received, I'm going to call it up to get the exact language. Basically, I would like to add an adjective before public input because public input is very broad and I would like it to say credible public input. Still subjective, but at least we're conditioning it somewhat. It says unless public input has been provided to the contrary, anybody can provide public input in any form at all and my request is that we call that credible public input.
Second.
On the amendment?
My second amendment. Okay, so any discussion on the amendment?
I have no problem.
Okay, all in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. On the main motion, any discussion?
There's not any motion yet.
Oh, does anyone want to make a amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number R-1830, a resolution requesting the US DA Forest Service to decommission certain closed roads in the Borough Mountains.
I would like to second that motion.
Any discussion?
And in discussion, I really, I really feel that they're really small distances. I think, like I said, I'm not against preserving our land, but I did have a couple calls from some of the people out in the boroughs.
Which I told you, they're represented.
Yeah. Oh, no, it's all you.
It's him.
Okay. But no, they did call me. I've got a lot of good friends out there and they're just afraid that if they decommission these roads, that others will start being decommissioned and there'll never be a chance for these roads to ever be reopened. And I just thought I'd make that comment because that was a concern from some of these people out there.
Further discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Agenda item D, a word to reject requests for proposals for opioid litigation services for Grant County.
This is the opioid litigation that we had discussed quite a while back about injuring into, there's these large lawsuits that are going on right now. And what we did is we went out for RFP to see, to get proposals from firms that are involved in the opioid litigation and we got two responses, not as many as we hoped for, but both were very good responses by firms that were, that had been involved with the litigation for quite some time now and had lots of experience. The committee recommends Napoli, let's see, let me make sure I get the names right. Napoli, Skolnik, and Fadul, Clough, Hardy, and Conway. It's two firms, as I'm sure you're aware, this is a pretty huge litigation, so firms are coming together to represent the different counties and municipalities. So these two firms got together and made a proposal to us. I think there's probably one or two other counties that are already signed up with this firm.
In the municipal?
Yes, possibly more now. They had a very good proposal. I think their approach looks very good. They agreed to our 25% flat contention fee. The other firm did not have some other pluses on that. So that is the recommendation of the committee and myself and please let me know if you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve RFP 1804 and it be given to Napoli, Skolnik, Fadul, Clough, Hardy, Conway, PC.
You just wanted to say.
I wanted to try to say those words. I didn't get it done.
Uh, discussion then.
As a question.
Yes, sir.
A member of the committee, how long have these firms been around?
Oh, gosh, I don't know. I'd have to look that.
Some of them don't remember those names.
I haven't either, but we did have a requirement, sorry, my memory's just not that great on this, we did have a requirement that they have substantial experience in this area of law, so they have attorneys that have been doing this type of work, not necessarily this particular case, obviously, but have been doing this type of work for many, many years. I do have their proposals that you could take a look at and you could see their experience that they set out for us and both of the firms and obviously this one have substantial experience. I didn't mention that Fadul is the local firm, you know, I think they're out of public custody.
According to this, they're now.
So we will have, you know, we have the firm that's actually involved very high up in the, it's all combined. You have a huge case like this, the federal courts will combine it, combine the cases. So Napoli is the one that's really right in and in with it and then Fadul will be the local that will help them, for instance, if they bring state lawsuits. I mean, they'll both be involved, but I think Fadul will be the local that will know all the local rules and all the local courts and those types of things. But yes, they do have substantial experience and I believe they've been around for quite a while.
Good.
And there is no out-of-pocket to us until?
No. If you read the compensation clause, I feel like it made it painfully, repetitively clear that they won't collect anything unless we receive an award, whether that be through a settlement or some other means. We will be on the hook for nothing unless there is an award to Grant County and then in that case, it'll be 25%. That's my understanding. So and that really is, I think, probably the best deal we're going to get.
So in the case of a class action lawsuit like this, if the award is 500 million, then they'll divide that all up between all the people who are on the case and then?
Yes, and I think that maybe, it may be even more specific, that they will look at each county and make us put together how much this costs. I suspect they'll put together some sort of formula and say, okay, how much has the opioid problem, how much damages in your county are there?
And that would be where Fadul would come in also as?
Probably, and it will require some work on the part of Grant County. However, I think because this is, again, I think it'll probably be more formulaic. I don't think they can get way down into the details of every county, but again, we'll have to, I'm sure, it could be specific county to county, you know, or maybe a court says has another formula, I don't know. Thank you.
Further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.